Okay, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, January 10th. We'll call it 7:04 PM. Currently present for the board are regular members Rob Ken, Sherri Bates, Ed O'Leary, and myself, Roy Gardner. So first item of business for tonight's meeting is to review and vote the minutes of December 20th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
So that's a motion, Ken, second Bates. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of Monday, December 20th, 21, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll show that as four in favor and none opposed. Mr. Chairman, I wasn't here for that, so that's fine. That's a...
Okay.
As we've been advised several years ago now, approving on the minutes is simply a procedural vote of the members present at the meeting where it's approved. It doesn't say necessarily that you approve of the content of the minutes. That's really up to the other members of the board to raise if there is a content issue.
Thank you.
And the minutes do reflect the fact that you weren't here, so there should be no issue with that.
Thank you.
So next item on the agenda is we have a preliminary plan for Hickory Hill, which is filed under Master General laws as a preliminary subdivision plan filed by PMP associates. Mr. Jacobs is here. This actually is the second version of this. We saw our earlier version, which I believe might have been filed the day before, or the last business day before our previous meeting.
Right.
Which we made some comments on at that meeting.
Yeah, so if I made Ed Jacobs, PMP, this plan differs quite a bit from the first plan that we did. We... The client, our client owns property to the east that wasn't involved in the first preliminary. So part of the comments that came from the board were to take out that cul-de-sac that was in the middle of the intersection. And so what we decided to do, what the client decided to do, was to extend the subdivision to the east because he owned that property. And so now we have a T-intersection with a cul-de-sac at either end. And we went from 17 lots to counting two additional Form A lots out on Central Street now that we get from those other parcels to the east. We have up to 26 lots. And what I've done is, at the end of the cul-de-sac, the most furthest to the east, we've put in a 20-foot-wide emergency access and utility easement, thinking that it would give us access to that cul-de-sac where there's only one access point of ingress/egress out to Central Street right now, and we could loop the water back out to Central Street. That was the thinking.
So the most obvious question is one of the things that we noted in our previous meeting in the marked plan, that the current policy of the board is to have all land at a bunch of the undeveloped property to leave either an easement right-of-way or something with temporary cul-de-sacs with a connection to that other property. And the other property in this case, although it's not shown in this plan, and we believe it should be on that plan, is Columbus Avenue.
Right.
Because Columbus Avenue legally still exists on paper.
Yeah. I just want to... If I can, I pass these out to the board?
Certainly.
This will help explain, or help you guys visualize what's going on, I think. Turn to the last page on this. So what happens is, that property that's to the east of the cul-de-sac, right here, my client doesn't own that. So Columbus is going to be way over here. If you go to the last page, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
So... Get this right here. On page four, you see what's in blue on the left of the cul-de-sac? This is owned by ADGA, not my client. So we just have to get some advice from the board on which, what we have to do with this cul-de-sac. Because we own it, but they own all the land around it, so how do we get over to there? So I'm thinking...
So first of all, a procedural question here. At one point in time, the same party owned all of that.
Right, but not anymore. That's kind of why I made this four-page, these four sheets, just to kind of show everybody what's happened with this property since the city sold it. If we can go back to the first sheet, EB Haziotis, AKA Hickory Hill, the first sheet, he bought those lots that are highlighted in orange. One, two, three, four, five, okay? Number sheet?
Page two? Because that's page one.
No, you got, see how it's folded there? That's the last page, right there.
I'm sorry.
Yep, okay. So page one, he buys those, right, from AdGA. So EB Haziotis, AKA Hickory Hill, who is my client. Then go to the second page, and he buys all the Form A lots out on the street, plus lot 11A. See the second page right there?
Yep.
All right, so now he owns all, he owns all the Form As, 11A, and 16. Okay? And then the last part he buys is parcel two on the third sheet. So he owns everything basically...
All right, so let's stop at that point, though.
Yep, okay.
But how'd he get to parcel two? Because that's not the, that's not the lotting that's shown on the prior plan page.
Yeah, well, that's, this parcel two was created with this Form A plan, which is in the registry. This Form A plan creates parcel two, and that's when he bought it. Right there. So now, basically, he owns from here all the way to, what you just say, it's Franklin Street, right? And he owns all the Form A lots out front. The only thing that he doesn't own is that, which is where Columbus Ave is going to be, right? I know, it's very confusing.
Well, the original plan, you have lots right up to Columbus Ave.
That's the old, that's, that was the subdivision. That was the previous prelim, but we changed it with this prelim.
Right. But if you're proposing, he didn't, he doesn't own these lots?
No.
So how would you, why were you proposing to build here if he didn't own them?
On the previous prelim, this...
This was the first one you issued?
Right, and these three lots were put on there in error.
Oh. Okay.
So this prelim, just fix it. So I think what has to happen, in my, my opinion, with this cul-de-sac, is we'd have to make sure that this lot number 17 is going to have enough frontage and lot 18, so that when that road is built, this cul-de-sac should be made an easement, a temporary turnaround. On the definitive subdivision plan, in my opinion. This should be solid. This should be an easement, and this should be granted back to AdGA.
So who's the principals in Hickory Hill?
EB Haziotis.
Who's the principals in, in AdGA?
George Haziotis.
So between me and you, I don't want attorneys to get involved here, but this is turning into a checkerboarding situation that we're not going to allow. I can tell you that right up front. You can't pass land back and forth to avoid doing what the planning board wants to do to meet up with what clearly is intended to be a roadway layout.
Right, that's not the intent. I just think, I just, this would be a solution, to have a temporary easement right here and have this roadway continue to the end. When these people come in to do this subdivision, the stipulation would be to tie that road into that road. This would get, this would, here would get granted back to AdGA as part of the definitive subdivision. So AdGA would own all that. This would be an easement, a temporary turnaround easement.
So that, that leaves us with a cot before the horse, because we can't put a condition on this that says when this is developed, it has to be connected here, because this land isn't part of the application.
No, it's not. It's, it's not.
I can see that being a huge problem if the other land never gets developed. Absolutely.
If the other land never gets developed, what's the problem? And I'm not following.
Well, first of all...
You have, you have access to the end of the cul-de-sac, and this is, this is a turnaround easement.
So he comes along and decides he's going to put in Columbus Avenue and connect it to Industrial Way, which has been the long-term plan.
Yep.
And then potentially take Columbus all the way down around and out to, out to Oak Street at some point in time. And develop everything on the, I guess it would be the Westley side of Columbus Ave, residential, everything in the right-hand side of Columbus Ave as industrial, once you get beyond the residential line. So he could build that road, just go in and leave that vacant for God knows how long. And, and, and effectively, by keeping a couple acres of land, thought the intent of the planning board that when that, this gets developed, it gets connected to Columbus or gets connected with a future connection shown on the plan as part of the subdivision.
So what you're saying is, when we come in, we have to show what's going to be happening with this?
I don't see any logical reason why the, it was divided up this way, other than to avoid connecting it to Columbus Avenue. That's a red flag. A red flag, in my opinion. I like the overall, I think the overall layout of, on this plan is better than the previous plan.
I agree.
But we, we're already dancing on things here in that, that, that basically we've allowed several roads to effectively disappear that, and that hasn't been done through the subdivision process, which is required under, under Master General laws. Right, because portions of Webster Street, Pearl Street, Groove Street, Austin Street, Soper Avenue go away.
Correct.
We technically don't have a right to make those go away until such time as we have a definitive plan filed.
Yes, agreed.
Part of the problem here is that Soper Avenue, which, it's not exactly the same, but...
No, it's closed, but yeah.
That is effectively that. Soper Avenue terminates at Columbus Avenue.
Right, correct.
So at an absolute minimum, Soper Avenue needs to be shown on that plan. The assessor's office has already acknowledged over a year ago that they made a major mistake when they, when they had the maps changed strictly on the deed transfers.
Right.
All those paper roads still exist, according to the assessor's office, and they will reappear when the assessor's office get their next annual plan update.
Until some plan gets filed.
Until some plan under subdivision control is filed.
Gets filed and recorded.
That takes those away, and we do our due diligence to make sure that eliminating those roads doesn't take access to some other third-party landowner.
Right, which is where Columbus Ave is, comes in. That's very important, for Columbus Ave to remain, because there's, I know this and you know, there's parcels up here.
So part of the problem with doing it this way, it implies that there is a third-party landowner or budding that who's supposed to have legal access to Soper Avenue, and there's nothing shown there.
Yeah. So... So we would have to show Columbus Ave connecting to Soper, correct?
Yeah, and Soper can be a dotted line, paper street, with some kind of notes on the, on the plan that, that Soper Avenue is to be constructed upon construction of that portion of Columbus Ave that would intersect with Soper Avenue on the plan.
Okay. That makes sense.
I think we can live with that. I think, I think that would, that would address the issue.
Okay. Dash, dash, note on the plan that when Columbus Ave is built, Soper Ave will be continued and connect with Columbus.
And I don't think that's going to be a problem, because I think if you draw that line straight, there's, there's very, very little difference in...
I'll make sure that it does. When all this happens and that, this will be an easement, a turnaround easement, and I'll make sure that we have 100 feet of frontage on, on all those before that happens.
But if we do that, I, I think then that effectively addresses the second issue.
Yeah, we just can't, we just can't show this as blank like this. We have to show how there's going to be some sort of future connection in here. That's what you're saying? Yeah, okay. We can do that.
So I would, I would ask you, you should pass on to your clients, a note that it's extremely dangerous under Master General laws with real estate to be flipping land back and forth between family members without having something, especially in an integrated form, so we can see what's going on.
Right.
Lots of case law says that doesn't hold any, any legal standing.
This is why I brought these four sheets, because this was kind of very consolidated.
Understand that? We want to be careful that, that at one point in time, basically, all this land was owned by the same party.
Yes. Correct.
So courts have repeatedly held, and when that's the case, if you start developing things piecemeal, the planning board has pretty strong rights under subdivision control to make sure that the roads end up where the roads should go, especially when there's old paper roads existing.
Exactly. Okay. So we change this so that we know that this lines up with Columbus.
Yep.
And then I'll continue this so that this comes out and connects with Columbus. All dashed, as you say, and then we'll have a note on the plan that Soper Ave is to be continued, this will show. Maybe we can even put a note right here on the plan.
Best place to put the note would be right there, right below where the future Soper Avenue is shown.
Right to the, right to the, okay.
Then at that point, then I think we're, we're pretty much okay with what we have there.
Okay. Got it. Do you think we're, at this point, ready to go to the next step into the subdivision stage? Does this, this plan looks good with those stipulations? Or do I have to come back one more time in the prelim and show you that? It doesn't matter immediately.
I don't think you need to actually draw Columbus, but I would like to see just on this plan, a note put here that, that Soper Avenue was intended to get connected in the, in the future to Columbus Avenue when Columbus Avenue was constructed.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you have to get all the meets and bounds and all that in there, but...
Yeah, I'll come back one more time in February with all of this drawn, and then, you know, make it so everybody can see it, and then we'll, you know, hopefully get a affirmative on going forward with the definitive after that.
You should also put, put a note on here, just so everyone that sees this is aware, because, because this is a public document of record. It doesn't have to be recorded, obviously, but it's a public document of record. There should be a note on here as to which of these paper roads is being eliminated based on the follow-up subdivision plan that will, will be the next step of this.
Right, okay.
So everybody's aware of that.
Yep. We can do that.
Other than that, that's, that's, that's all I have, I think, in...
Don't I remember another building or something proposed on the, with the end of the cul-de-sac was a big...
Did it get, I'm sorry.
Wasn't there another, it was a couple of years ago, maybe? A large building proposed on that end? Remember that? Maybe there wasn't?
No, it was before my, before I got the, oh, I guess. It was down here on the corner, there's, there's another, something proposed, I don't know exactly.
Kind of storage or... You don't remember that, Ed? I don't know. It was just a rumor.
Anything else? Ed, you have anything?
No.
Sherri, you have anything?
No.
All right, I think we should be good with the, if you want to bring that back with that on it, then...
Yeah, I'll come back in February, February 7th, I think.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. So I'll have the plan in, not the last second this time, I'll have the plan in in a couple of weeks, so we can get a look at it, and then I'll be back on the 7th, all right?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as, as I think we all remember, the applicant of Nice Estates, Ben Carroll, R.J. Carroll, owners that eight-lot subdivision, that's been continued through until January, I'm, I'm sorry, February 7th. So, and, and I know they're still trying to work out some of the issues with the city of Brockton to resolve the questions that were raised in, in our initial session of the public hearing. The 611-689 Oak Street, that's the land that the Health Club slash gym and the solar roof building that's got storage underneath, that's the land in between there that they're attempting to address a parking lot encroachment. Significant, well, maybe not a significant, significant in, in longitude, not necessarily in width, but there's a long strip of land between the two that the Health Club is using as part of their parking lot, that, that based on updated surveying work actually belongs to the solar, the solar building. They have come up with a Form A plan, which I saw, and had some notes added to, to do a transfer of part of that strip. Basically, most of the paved parking lot would be conveyed over to the, to the Health Club. It doesn't appear to impact the special permit for the, for the solar field, but my understanding is they haven't yet, the two owners haven't reached a full resolution and aren't necessarily ready to say that's a go yet, so... Engineers that are, that are working on that are still holding that plan out so that we don't endorse it until such time both of the parties agree that that's the final plan they want, so we don't have to do it a second time. So there was attached to the agenda some road bonds and special engineering accounts that were working jointly with the financial offices downstairs to try and, let's say, close out the majority of those old accounts, which are clearly no longer active. I've asked to get a Excel spreadsheet of those. I think the original that came to the office, I thought Dot said came electronically in an Excel spreadsheet, but when it came to me via email, it was attached as a PDF that had been scanned.
That's how I received it, too.
So I'm, I'm trying to get it back so that, what I want to try and do is add some additional columns on that to find out exactly which subdivision. Some of the names on it are subdivision names, and some subdivision names don't have the names of the roads. So I'm, I wanted to try and glue all of that together. Patrick in the, in the office is working on engineering accounts that are for projects that, that don't impact subdivision control under the planning board, that don't impact long-term bond monies and things like that. Most of those are individual projects where they got a special permit and they're putting up a building, and the building is done, and the work is done on the sites. If we look at the, the copy that was appended to the minutes, in the engineering accounts paged, there's, I think it was 10? I guess it's actually 11. There's 11 projects that are yellowed out with a highlighter.
Yes.
Those, those projects were indicated to be construction projects that are complete and finished, are no longer active.
Yeah.
So the thought was, there's no reason we can't ask the, the town financial group, I'm never sure whether it's the treasurer or the collector or exactly who has that money, or the accountant. I mean, it's, it's one of them that's attracted that. That, that Patrick...
Yeah, usually that goes through the treasurer collector's office on those.
So I think what Patrick wanted was an okay from the plan. Patrick's going to be the one who signs the final document now to release funds, either for paying bills or whatever. Clearly, under subdivision control, we're going to be the ones who authorize him to, on our behalf, go ahead and do that. We have to vote things under subdivision control. But I didn't see any problem with any of those that are listed, as none of those are any longer active, active projects that are ongoing. They're all completed at this point.
Yeah.
Or, and at least one case, which I believe is Celebrity, that, that project is, is gone. If he wants to file, he'd have to file again, so... So I, I don't think, does Patrick need a vote from, is he looking for a vote from the planning board to release those, or just...
I think so. And then we could start the process, like Sherri said, we have to go through the treasurer's office.
Okay, so... So I guess we can entertain a motion to, to authorize the building commissioner to proceed with releasing the funds on those 11 accounts. Those 11 accounts, and just for the record, so that there's a record, it's E179, E181, E182, 183, 184, 185, E188, E189, E193, E199, and E201. Those are the 11 accounts. All of the others that are on there need some additional identification and/or research to determine exactly where they fit in the, in the overall scheme of things these days. So could I have a, a motion to authorize the building commissioner to, to send a, a document to the, to the town financial officer to proceed with the release of those 11 accounts to the, to the current owner? So that's a motion, McKenzie.
Second.
McKenzie, yeah.
McKenzie, yeah.
I'm looking at another document over here, got the wrong name, so... That's a motion, O'Leary. Second Ken, I'll get that right, yeah. Why don't you leave it facing me, Ed, so that... All those, any discussion on the motion? And as I said, I'm going to work more on those others in conjunction with the building commissioner to try and, and sort out exactly where some of those other accounts need to go and where they are. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote, or four in favor and none opposed. So I think up until our next meeting on February 7th, I think we're, we're good for tonight. Anyone here have anything else we need to do? Candy or Ellen, anything there?
Wasn't she or, is this what, I just came in late, so is this what Ed was here for in PMP?
I don't know, what is that?
That was here when I walked in.
Oh, Captain's Way. So this was on the desk, so I don't know, it's not on the agenda, but it was left on the desk. I don't know if this is supposed to be something everyone's looking at today. It's in your book, but not on the agenda.
Can I just take a quick look at the, let me see that roll? Or is there, is there an actual copy of it up here? Is this the, the revisions that incorporate all the changes that had to be made after we approved this?
Did they drop this off today or Friday, do you know? I think Friday. We're not here for the starters. Either it came today or Thursday after the... It either came today or Thursday after the We just brought it, just in case something anyone was going to do it before.
Is that related to that? Yeah, it is. Okay. I don't know if everybody got a copy of that, or if that was the only copy that was sitting here. Yeah, I don't see one over here, but. So, the, the Captain's Way. It says off Captain's Way. Southridge Drive, right? Is the name of the new road? So, this was the subdivision we approved in the second half of last year, right?
Yeah.
And there were comments from the, from the engineering team, and I believe it was Allen and Major's at that point.
That sounds right.
Because they were reviewing for conservation, so we had them do the, do the review. So, this has got to be the set of plans that came back to address Allen and Major's comments. Although I don't, I don't clearly see that written here anywhere. But based on the date it has to be. Is this the same date as, as on the Mylar that's up there? Revision four, September 2nd, 2021?
Says September 2nd, 21.
I wonder why we're just getting this now?
Yeah, I was going to say, I know we just got it, though.
All right, since it just got here, we, we can't really do anything with this tonight anyway, so. I'll talk to, I'll talk to Dot in the, in the morning and try and sort. This has got to be the set of plans that came back with the changes made for the, for the stormwater and engineering things that were noted on the original subdivision plan after we approved it. Like that?
Yes.
Is there one like that? We didn't get one like that for this?
I don't think so. That's what I'm saying, I just started checking it out. And we need a complaint with me, so I just brought it.
I'll call them in the morning. I can call them and talk to, Ed will talk to me. He's usually in the office, and he picks up when I call. Well, he can call me back, just so we can figure out exactly what that is. Because I know we haven't signed the Mylar for that yet. Yeah, because it's the whole subdivision plan. I know we've, we've long, well, I think we've long since received a letter back from the town clerk saying no appeal has been taken, right?
Yes, back in July.
That's what I, that's what I thought. All right, let me, let me, I'll give Ed a call in the morning and just ask him exactly what that is to make sure. All right, anything else? So, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion, O'Leary, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, O'Leary, second ten to adjourn at, uh, 7:38 PM. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll call a meeting adjourned at, uh, 7:38 PM. Thank you all, that's a motion that carried four in favor and none opposed. Thank you all again.